And they've got a county that's only fifteen miles.
Good morning, everyone. We'll bring this meeting of the Koochting County Board of Commissioners to order. First thing we'll do is stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Move. Second.
That was a motion to approve the agenda?
Yep.
Motion to approve the agenda.
That's something we can okay on.
Got a motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Pavlik. There was no additions or deletions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Two minutes, October tenth, regular meeting.
Hold on a minute.
Then a motion by Commissioner Norby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion. Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Personnel business. Notice of hire. Complex superintendent. Hire of Dean Tweet. And starting date, October thirtieth.
Correct. He's very excited.
Alright, that's good. And also a notice of temp hire for a transport driver. That's...
Transporting what?
Backing service.
Oh, okay.
No, it's for the police department.
Okay.
For sheriff's department?
The sheriff's department, okay. Alright, financial business. Approve highway claims.
Move to approve the claims.
Got a motion by Commissioner Norby.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion.
Do we want our enough builders to last for years?
Yeah. For years, huh? Okay.
I wonder how, I wonder how he's doing down there in Arizona.
Any discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Discuss revision to the proposed 2018 fee schedule.
Mr. Chair. Now you see that they have removed the agriculture and logging from that that over, overweight the deal, and I know we're having tonight a public meeting on it, but I, Trent sent me a a deal on all the other counties on their permits and my, it was, my email was so fuzzy, I couldn't read it all. I'd like to see a hard copy. But I called and talked to people from Itasca, Beltrami, and Lake of the Woods County, and they said, they didn't even know that they, those counties had that permit. So I'm wondering what, why, what the purpose of it is and is it gonna be one time for a whole year, or you just haul and get it? Is it gonna be, and I think it was twenty-five bucks a hit? Well, you know, maybe that's not a lot of money, but if they have to call and get one every time they're gonna move, I I wouldn't think someone maybe like, like Wagner or someone would be, I'm just using him because they move a lot of different machines. And they have to permit to run on the state highways, we know. But I don't know, I don't know what, I'd like to talk to the engineer's office just to find out what their, what their goal is here. If it's, it's not a revenue raiser, I don't know what it is.
Did they remove that issue?
No, they left the overweight, overweight in there. But it's, but they removed the, the ag and the, and the logging portion of it. And so I, from talking to people that run the business, they, they were kinda wondering, uh, if it's just there in case they wanted, or if there's actually a purpose for it, or like I said, I'd like, well, if it does.
Did you say other counties did or didn't have?
They have it. But no one that does business in that county, no. Well, some of them have for that. But I never talked to anyone else of another county that even knew that their county had a permit system.
Oh, yeah.
You see what I'm saying? So I, I don't know, I'd like to talk to the highway department, see what they...
Nathan, do you know any counties that have fees for logging equipment, stuff like that?
Yeah, Itasca, Beltrami, a lot of them do, but as I understand it, right Nathan?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I mean, I've never heard of the issue coming up, I guess. But I mean, they may have it, but they obviously are...
But from, but from in that corner where we've got loggers in Beltrami and Itasca and Koochting and Lake of the Woods, none of them had ever heard of anything in the other counties, so I don't, I'm just...
You'd like to clarify and be sure of what?
Yeah.
I guess my question is, what, what deemed an oversized load, so is it outside the edges of that logway?
I think it's, I think it's ten feet.
Ten feet?
It's nine or ten feet wide, yeah.
So, so the logging equipment's gonna be exempt from this?
Yes, it's exempt.
So who's this, only the oversight load's only gonna be?
It'd be anyone, construction business or, you know, like moving a...
A crawler, like with a crawler or?
Yeah. And, and sometimes they're not overweight, they're just overweight.
Could I suggest you table this until highway comes in at ten AM?
Yeah, great, yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, it's just for discussion, not any else. I mean, we're not gonna act on it, but... And that should, that may come off the meeting, I don't know if highway's gonna be there tonight or not.
We could, we could talk with, you know, when Joe comes in too. And Nathan will be here then also.
Well, like I said, it's not affecting, it's not affecting the loggers anyway.
Okay. Commissioner.
Betsy, do we, do we really know all our fee schedule, what the total revenue was for the year?
From all the different fees?
Yeah, or is it going to each different department?
It goes into different funds, but I mean, we could certainly pull that information and I...
And we're looking for ways to raise some, raise a little bit of revenue, but it looks like all these have, they've been the same since I've been here. You know?
A lot of them happen.
There's sometimes it's, you know, across the board, five percent increase, I mean, they're so minimal, but it's a few bucks.
Right.
Yeah, anyway, that's just my, I'm, we don't need to do it this year, we gotta start looking at that.
Okay. We'll talk about it when Joe comes in. Renew County Group Health Insurance and Flex Spending Account for 2018. Move. Our motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second. Second by Commissioner Norby. Discussion.
There's a, there was an increase, I see. There's an offset, I didn't quite understand that.
Do you know how that works?
I'm sorry, I haven't been involved in this.
I was just curious.
I think we have to approve it whether there was a change, or no change up or down, whatever.
I do know the insurance committee met on all of this, and this was sent out to all the, all the members of the, the unique insurance.
This was their recommendation, right?
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Adopt order for Island View Sewer Project. Chair, move to adopt the order as presented. There's a, I think there's a resolution along with it that probably is gonna need to be signed, but I think the, the new areas, well, I just, let's move first before discussion. Got a motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Pavlik.
But I think by order of the logging company and everybody else involved in the area of the Island View Sewer has to be included, an extra included into East Kooch to make it all within that sewer district. So we are expanding East Kooch Sewer District officially, the way I read it.
And if this passes, you have to sign.
It's not gonna send me to prison, is it?
You never know. You won't be able to go to AMC though.
Exactly. Can do it through video.
That's true, yeah.
Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Couple minutes, Nate, but gonna come on up? How you been doing?
Good, what you guys?
Alright. Did I burn anything?
No, I have not. Not very good reports out there though either.
Nope, I got three birds last week.
The ones you fed all the summer?
I don't know, probably.
Those were the neighbors', those were the neighbors' chickens.
Actually, I shot three and one hit the window, so. So we got two meals.
So do you sell any more tax forfeited land over the counter?
Yeah, we sold, so the following Monday morning, we sold four tracts.
Yeah, really?
So we have nine that remain unsold on a thirty-seven, so it was, I think in terms of the tax forfeited lands, I think it was fairly successful, so.
Great. You did a good job at the auction.
Didn't get tongue tied too bad?
Not too bad.
You did a good job.
But you made some people all mad.
I was hoping to get up there with you.
Somebody keeps adjusting these chairs. I'm gonna put my name on it and say do not adjust.
Yeah, mine keeps. I command them to sit in the way now.
Yeah, these are, these are good summaries for the, my second item.
Do I come in here and soil water and change the walls or something?
Yeah, well, there's a one.
Thank you. Yeah. Obviously, some people do it, they want to, they just feel no thrilled.
Okay, we can get started here.
Alright.
Authorize engineer to solicit quotes.
Nope.
Oops, wait a minute, I put the wrong column here. Okay. Approve the 2018 timber auction dates.
Yeah, so this is something we do annually. We have, this is in line with the same, kinda same date, time thing as what we've, what we've had in the past for our, for timber auction dates. We do, kinda, we typically have one roughly one a quarter, so two of these are held as, here in the falls at Rennie River, and then we usually have the May auction in Little Fork and the August auction is in Big Falls.
February, November, at Rennie River?
Yes, yep.
Move to second timber auction dates.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner McBride, second by Commissioner Skoye. Discussion.
I already, I already told the fiber council that we're going with the same format as last year, so I have to second that one.
Any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Award building demolition bids.
Yeah, so as you'll recall, back in September, we, we went out for bid on building demolition, to seek building demolition quotes on a couple of tax forfeited buildings in Main Street, Little Fork. It was kind of, it was up in the air on where, where these were gonna come in, you know, we have roughly twenty thousand left in our budget. I was actually thinking that these bids would possibly come in above that, and I was pleasantly surprised when we opened the bids.
I'll move low bidder for if we change our mind.
Got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik. Second by Commissioner Norby. Discussion.
City of Little Fork would really appreciate those too, because it's gonna leave a gaping hole on Main Street, but hopefully something else will come in.
Commissioner McBride.
So Jim Kennedy Truckee would, would get the bid? Do they have a start date, or?
Well, we, we kinda put in the bid package that we'd like the project to be done by the end of November. That's one of the bigger, bigger reasons why we put that in there is because they'll have to put water on the project and you're gonna get into freezing issues and stuff, but they, they can't start immediately, they have to file a ten day notification on the MPCA, an intent demo form application, so, because the building had asbestos in it, so. So they're hoping, I mean, we're gonna hopefully meet with them yet this week and we'll get them going on that stuff and hopefully first part of November.
And that was, but that was part of the abatement cost that we saw come through, was for this building?
For this building, yeah.
Asbestos is already removed?
The, what is considered friable asbestos is removed, there's non-friable asbestos in there that can stay as long as it goes through. Landfill takes asbestos, which...
Ours is.
Ours is, so as long as they don't make it friable during, during the project. What's left is basically it's the, the glue or mastic that held the floor tile in place, so, so it can stay. I had a gentleman from the MPCA from the, who came, came up and kinda walked through with, I've never been involved in anything like this before, and he said just, you know, when you're taking that concrete out, take it out in as big a chunks as you, as you can, so.
Okay. Do those have basements?
No.
All nine inch floor tile is asbestos. Twelve, twelve inches vinyl, so that's what they made there.
I was reading something the other day that there were some twelve inch, actually, that, that were asbestos stuff.
We, we took some twelve inch out of this one and then we did a...
Okay.
But nine inch, nine inch for sure is...
Yeah, all nine inch was...
They're usually a darker color, from what I understand, so.
Yeah, this building had kind of a, the whole spectrum, we had, had, looking at them, you couldn't tell the difference. And one would, one room would have it, the other room wouldn't, based on the samples that the inspector did.
Oh.
So all the material will end up here at the transfer station?
Yep.
Was there soil testing? So we're not gonna get into another laundry, take the...
No, hopefully not. It was, from what I know, that this property was a lumberyard. It was the old rendezvous, it might even have been the BMW club years ago down there, and then it was like a movie rental, kind of a taco stand.
So Nathan, when they, when this tax forfeited property, and they bring all that material up here to the transfer station, do we, there's no tipping?
We're, we're, we kinda said in the bid, when we approved the bid form, that bid package that we would waive that tipping if it comes up here to the bones.
Otherwise, we're working against ourselves.
Yeah.
Which building is it?
It's a Quonset building across, from the, from the hardware hang.
Oh, yeah, 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 just, just north of it a little bit. I think it was service station on that door.
Next door to that, that's tax forfeit as well. Actually, one of the, one of the buildings on this, on this demo project, there's a small, like a, like a small metal shed that's on that, where that service station. They're, they just have untouched, so we're gonna, we're gonna get them, get rid of all of them in this project, so.
Any further discussion?
I'm wondering, so you had an auction and sold several pieces of land at the same time, there's a new list developing, is that always the case? I mean, that's kinda how it works.
Yeah, and I think there's probably more of them on the list this year than in past years because they changed the law. It used to be a five year delinquency, now it's three, so you, so I think this year is the first year where we're gonna see both the three and the five year forfeitures, so.
It never ends.
It never ends, yeah.
Any, any further discussion? Hearing then, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Alright.
Page your signature.
Thanks, Nathan. Joe, you wanna come on up? Yep. Okay. What is it, sixteen then?
Seventeen.
How's Joe today?
Good, how are you doing?
Okay. Ready for, ready for a fun day.
Seventeen, seventeen. Alright. Morning, Joe.
Morning.
Joe. Ryan.
Maybe some discussion on that.
Okay, yep, we'll wait a few minutes here, so.
Better wait just in case.
Yep.
Read your, your email last night. It's fun reading.
There was two, there was the downtown Rainier was the first.
Right. I really confused them.
I called Cheryl this morning to see if she had an update coming to plan, and she was not in this morning.
Okay, interesting, this is positive business momentum.
Second email, this other one on Rainier. Second one was on three thirty-two and one fifty-five, winter road maintenance agreement, and the discussion about, about that.
I'll book it. Well, maybe that came through with Joe and Kevin.
I'm not sure, it was...
What's that?
You were working late because that one came in later.
I looked at it this morning, is what I looked at. What time do you quit every day?
Oh, it varies, varies sometimes. Sometimes when it, you know, clears out at five or whatever, when you can, clients down, you can get some stuff down, I like.
Full misery.
Kinda get you home once in a while, or your family will be mad at me.
How'd your riffing project go?
Good, Tucker's came up and helped him. Daniel, he's the boy, but he's the accessor, they're kinda like Len is here. He's young, but he strapped that, Richard, obviously gave me one of those vests. He strapped, he strapped a rope to himself and tied it up to a couple of the big rafters there. He went up and, it feels like a mountain climber, he's up and down, zips, zips, pedal straight. It's so fast, I couldn't, we, it was down there too, and then we threw the sheets up, but... Actually, we laid all the sheets out first to make sure it was just right. Sure. Because they say if you don't get the fir, right, and have that experience, if you don't get the first one right, you know, throw job all the way. So I said, let's throw them all up. I built stops at the bottom, so that must work. Yeah, it worked really well. I could've never done that. Excellent. So the rest of the, so we got it half done. I mean, only, that's like three hours, you know, that whole, it's deep side, that's, the sheets were seventeen, we had a log, and that's... And it was kinda windy. Yeah. Awfully nice, and I appreciated that. So the rest of it, I think I get some other sites, like a block on it. Yeah, because everyone's working, you know, planes fishing, he's pulling nets every day. Yeah, sure. Hard, hard workers. Nice people.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Is the younger Tucker, is he kind of a trainer's character? Yeah, we were, he was given his wife a hard time, because she's had ladder training and he didn't. He said, you should be up here. And so she actually did get up on the roof and, you know, help pull accessories. Sure. Oh, they're fun. See, in Canada, you have to, it has to, boy, it has to be Canadian people, they've got the right to work on, type deal going, so, here we have, you know, friends that help you, or you can hire a Canadian contractor. Well, I learned a lot, I'm, you know, because they had done, they've done their own stuff, you know, yeah.
So would you get the, you know, away?
So, it's getting there, I'll get, now I think, I'll be looking at close, Dan, I was wondering, but it's getting pretty close, so.
Yeah, it's a nice call, actually. Yeah.
You know, I had that for...
We gotta put the chimney, so that's kinda... I got a call from Kate Miller yesterday. She's been out of town for a few days, but she received the drawings, the little plot that we provided her, and she confirmed that her and the Briggs family are on the same page, and we spotted out the idea where they wanted it, so, it seemed like she was feeling okay about it. Quite glad I got to the meeting the other day, that, you know, there's a lot going on there, and that is, boy, that's a tough area.
At the county extension meeting yesterday, there was a comment from one of the members about some issues going on, and, you know, I just tried to explain to that person that you get a project this size, this could miss scope, and that there's, there bound to be things that are gonna come out, that you can't, can't cover everything.
Well, Joe came out there with me, and after last week, I had to leave. The phones were ringing, the bells were going.
You think that in that result, there's just gonna be lots of overruns, cost flies or not?
Sorry, there's always gonna be some cost overruns if we do, what we talked with contractors about, I mean, if you have a better idea than we can do for the same or less money, and the people agree with it, by all means, that value engineering, that's what it's...
That ass building can be different than the drawings.
When you get up there and actually start digging, right Joe? Mind all kinds of things you didn't realize.
Yeah, there were, there was some comments about, like along eleven east, oh my gosh, you know, with the scars in the ditch, all this stuff, but I went up here the other day, and that stuff is starting to heal itself already, it looks better.
Well, they're, and they're gonna have to do cleanup yet, right?
Right. A lot of restoration, yeah.
Yeah, we had all that rain there for a while, so there was no way to get in there. Now it's drying out pretty good, but even if it goes through next year, they have to come back. When they're, look at the original project, I mean, you can't tell they're ever there once they're done cleaning out. But it looks bad during construction, there's no question.
Yesterday, yesterday or Sunday, I can't remember when they was coming back from Ray, they was Monday. Yeah, I don't remember. Come back from Ray and I met a train going south. And that thing was almost to the overpass at Ray, and I think I was still, I'm still being trained at Erickburg.
Yep.
And that thing had to be two and a half miles long.
Yeah.
I think they kept saying that they don't have over eleven thousand feet, but...
Yeah, there's, there's some...
Eleven thousand meters, more than two miles.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, there's some, I wouldn't let them go through that are over two, so.
Wonder how those railcars can stand that pressure? Pulling, braking, you know, they don't, don't collapse if they have to.
Where you could really appreciate it along there is in San B, when they come, you know, they're heading for the railroad bridge there, you got that big moan.
Yes.
My gosh, it just goes forever. Carol and I were coming back from the cabin last night, just a dark, and here a guy is, motor, when he had four kids, they were fishing. And they were right, right by the railroad bridge, and the current is really moving in there right now, so it must have some gates open. So he was stuck, so we towed him to a five mile dock. He certainly appreciated it.
Have you, have you gotten any calls from Tony Jackson on how many railcars you've gone through this year now?
No, I don't, I don't have enough of your number.
I forget one.
Yeah.
That'd be, that'd be interesting to know. I remember last year was like eight hundred thousand, right?
Cars?
Yeah.
They must know exactly how we go through, because the x-ray, every one of them.
Yeah. Tony's been good about meeting with us every few months. Yeah. I appreciate it.
Alright, tell the clock.
He said he's totally dedicated to getting you to work.
Getting what?
Getting you to work.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
We're tired of that.
We're trying to get him to work too.
Yeah. We're getting tired of that stop by the train routine.
Well, I'm, I'm getting neighbors that are...
Getting Irene.
Kinda getting, yeah, kinda getting tired of the delays, and of course now they're, you know, they're putting a new siding in, while supposedly two, but...
They're not expanding the crossing, are they?
We got that other issue that...
They're not supposed to.
We get the access issue settled, I'm solidly, with the... He was driving around on the Van Lynn Road instead, didn't he? No. I think that, I think that the Bowman trucks are using eleven to one fifty-five to three thirty-two to the Van Lynn. There's, there's still work ongoing on the maintenance agreement for the Moonlight Rock Road with C.
There's, there's still work ongoing on the maintenance agreement for the Moonlight Rock Road with CN now. I think CN has stepped in to sort of be the, the signing partner on the maintenance.
I guess that works.
Yeah. All right, highway business. Authorized engineer to solicit quotes for purchase of vehicle for highway department maintenance supervisor. Got a motion by Commissioner Skoye. Second. Second by Commissioner Nordby, discussion.
Did I, did I read in, in the pamphlet you sent out on the specification on the maintenance bill?
We had a four-wheel drive, four-door, gas engine, three-quarter ton pickup. That's what we were looking for.
What, what you, you are specifying three-quarter ton, four-door?
There have been times when the maintenance supervisor or that vehicle is used to haul a car hauler with the equipment on it, that could be skid steer, things like that, so. That vehicle is not always used just by the maintenance supervisor, but it does do some hauling as well.
Okay. Well, I'm very happy with your staff, Joe.
Very good.
Your assistant engineer and supervisor.
Great.
So, but don't tell Farnum either, I made a motion for a vehicle.
Did the.
Sheriff's Department.
Yeah.
Did the maintenance supervisor before have their own?
Well, I always have, here's what happens at night during the holiday or weekend when there's a problem, that's what's going on.
And there is one thing about four-wheel drive vehicle, with those two-wheel drives, I can see down the road, there are certain situations where they could have a ball on it and do some cleanup. Especially around communities where, you know, it's not needed to bring the whole truck down there.
That's right.
And it's, would be cheaper, faster, and less.
That's right. When, when Walt retired the maintenance supervisor's truck, which was one of the few four-wheel drives, that went down to Mispa, and then it's gone back and forth between Mispa and Big Falls. So it was part of the Mispa expansion. And then because it has four-wheel drive, as Wayne says, they use it for some, some plowing of some of the lighter roads, can't take the heavy trucks, and so. The former maintenance supervisor's truck is coming back and forth between Big Falls and Mispa. So we're really just kinda backfilling from following the transfer of that truck to the other jobs.
Okay. And I think that there, they were talking, there's some places where there are roads, county roads that dead end. And to, the first couple of times to get in there, before it froze down, they had trouble with the trucks getting stuck.
Yep.
They could go out with a pickup and follow the snow back and put frost in there, so.
Right.
You know, and I can see where it would save a lot of time and money to use a pickup rather than a.
Our current maintenance, maintenance supervisor does so many things that you folks don't even hear about. It's unbelievable, we're fortunate to have him, and we certainly wanna keep him, and I just can't say enough about the work he does. And plus, he's so, I mean, he's got these talents and qualifications, he does things for us that we used to have to hire, I mean, just, I can't say enough about it, we're lucky to have him.
Probably benefits some good direction from his.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah.
This, this in the budget for the sheriff?
It is.
Okay.
Wayne and I deal more with that stuff because, you know, we've got all that rural area out there, and so we know what's going on, you know. It just, like I said, I certainly appreciate it.
That was the only question on, on being a four-wheeler, but I can see if that's the case, and he's, if he has extra guys that have to go to work, it's cheaper.
I might vote against the truck just to make him get in trouble.
Commissioner McBride.
Joe, I, I respect, so when we're talking about plowing, you did not specify a plow or setup to accept a plow or anything like that, correct?
We have not, no, I think we thought we'd deal with that.
Try to get this one first class.
Well, we're, we're actually looking at, we have two single axle standard trucks that we're looking at converting to a single axle plow trucks. And right now, the, the single axle standard trucks are sort of one-dimensional. We could put a front plow and a side plow on those single axles, and then they can become a plow slash standard truck. So the other truck we have, we have a one-ton dive that I think we got last year, that we have a big, a big plow on that one. That serves as sort of a, kind of a handy step down from a tandem as well. This one, we, we hadn't wrestled with whether we have to hang a plow on this one or not, but we may be coming back on that one, just didn't have it incorporated in this purchase.
Maybe in his next life. I mean, it might go from being that down to.
Sure. And all the three-quarter tons of plow prep, there's a difference when you order them other than, you know, I'm saying.
Sure.
About all three-quarters of them, maybe.
Let me tell you, Brian, I could tell you a story, we bought a new one at the airport, and the first, first season. The entire frame broke.
Yeah, I drove that thing to the auction.
Oh, did you? Took your life in your own hands there.
Hopefully they had it welded together.
Yeah, it drove pretty good, it actually drove pretty good.
Well, let's do this for Brad, and we'll tell him we still like him.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing no one in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Approved road maintenance agreement with Wagner Construction.
Do have handouts, does everybody have something that was in the packet? There was a couple things in the packet, there was a one-page overview of the conditional use permit, it was conditional use permit thirteen oh two. There was also a letter that Dale had sent to Wagner Construction, reiterating what they needed to do in order to get through all the hurdles of the conditional use permit. Then there was the, I think it's three or four-page road maintenance agreement that we have with Wagner Construction.
Those are the three items.
Okay. And so, we worked through the road maintenance agreement terms with our county attorney's office, with Molly. We tried to identify a framework that we thought addressed the requirements of the conditional use permit, just to reiterate that, condition six of the CUP says the applicant must have a written agreement in place from the county to use County Road one forty-four as a, as a haul road. We actually did some research with Steve Blair and Dale Olson, we looked back at, I think, the last six or seven conditional use permits that were issued by the county for the same kind of facility. There was language either in the CUP or attached to those CUP that put the burden on the, on the contractor or on the applicant to maintain the road to a prescribed standard, you know, as approved by the county, that sort of thing. With the, with this road maintenance agreement, because of the concerns we have on County Road one forty-four, we tried to go into a little bit more detail about our specific concerns relative to the road. We drafted this document, again, had it approved by our attorney's office, sent it to Wagner Construction. They said they had it reviewed by their legal representation, and they signed it and sent it back. So, we wanted to have Wagner review it and agree to sign it before we brought it to the board. If there's something about the road maintenance agreement that the board doesn't like, we can certainly make those changes and get it back to Wagner. But we are, we're submitting this road maintenance agreement as signed by Wagner for consideration by the board. If it's acceptable to the board, then we'd ask to have the board chair authorized to sign the agreement and execute the document.
Commissioner.
So with this, with this agreement, then we're treating all contractors equally, this is.
We're trying to outline, yeah, we're trying to outline our expectations for the road in as specific terms as we can. We're trying to be sure that it meets the requirements of the conditional use permit. And I think that we're gonna try to be able to use this more maybe comprehensive document moving forward. Now, even Dale was involved with review of this document as well. Dale has some additional thoughts about things that maybe wouldn't have to be in the maintenance agreement, but additional signage, let's say, there's a couple of sharp curbs on one forty-four. We could add some warning signs to advise drivers of the curbs. We could talk about what's the speed, what's the rate speed on one forty-four. Some internal items for the county to make it a safer road as possible in the haul road environment. But we don't have those in the maintenance agreement, we just thought we would deal with those at the county level.
Commissioner.
Oh, Commissioner.
Joe, at what point does public use of a county road change to then a, a private individual company becoming a haul road? Is there, is there, all of a sudden, things change?
One of the, I think one of the key items on County Road one forty-four is the fact that it's a road of such limited subgrade. It's a, it's a posted road at four tons, and so the loads that, in this case, Wagner would be hauling would be in excess of the four-ton axle loading. So what the county has talked about, we, we tried this with other contractors, including Minnesota Power. We tried to get into a situation where we can, we can issue either overweight or oversized permits as, enough of trade-off is the right word, but as part of this road maintenance agreement, the county would, would acknowledge that the loads are in excess of four-ton axle loading. But on the other side of that, then, the contractor or the applicant agrees that damage to the road as a result of them using it as a haul road. So I think one of the key triggers here is the, the axle loading is one of the items. The general terminology for other conditional use permits on haul roads was fix the rutting, maintain the road to a prescribed condition, to the county standards, that kind of thing.
So, so just as an example, if we had two contractors using any road, I mean, it could be one forty-four, whatever.
Right.
Then they would, they would both, they would have to share them in the.
Right, we have a parallel effort going on that started with Bowman, and then now it's morphed into a deal with the CN Railroad.
Right.
Bowman is constructing added infrastructure for the CN, I think in the area from the Van Lynn Road north up to Highway eleven area. And there was a lot of hauling that was taking place on the Moonlight Rock Road that was with trucks in excess of the four-ton axle loading. So we tried working with Bowman to develop a road maintenance agreement. In that process, CN stepped in and said that they will become the signatory on the road maintenance agreement. So we have a very similar document. We have copies here if you wanna look at it, but the road maintenance agreement with CN outlines all these same things, the road maintenance agreement with CN gets into specific dollars and cents at the request of CN. So we met on site with CN staff from, from Illinois and from the Proctor area. They asked that we convert the road maintenance agreement into basically a lump sum agreement. And so we identified in the road maintenance agreement for CN, has all the same terminology, but it puts it in specifics. X yards of gravel over this length that converts to ten thousand dollars, and so on. And so we are going back and forth with CN on what's the right lump sum dollar value for the Bowman work associated with this siding work that's north of the Van Lynn Road. I think the CN has a separate contract for work south of the Van Lynn. CN has told us that the contractor that will be doing that south project will not be using Moonlight Rock Road, that's the latest that we have from CN on that.
Well, that worked out well, I appreciate all the work you did on that too. I guess it's all just part of trying to keep you from getting to work. That's what these were.
Right, yeah.
And concerned with other folks that need to get out of there, so, more into there.
Well, it's hard, I mean, I, I like, I like what you set up here because it lays it out, you get, you know, contractors need to work, but we need to protect the county road, and so that's, there's the.
One little difference between what's in the Wagner document and what would be in the CN document. The Wagner document is a, is a multi-year agreement, sort of not ending this fall, but continuing in the future as long as the CUP is valid. The CN document is a very short term, the railroad says they'll be done in the middle of November.
Projectified.
Yes, and so that was a slightly different timetable between the CUP document and the CN Railroad document.
Good. Okay, Commissioner McBride, did you have something?
Well, I was just, on the, on the, on the conditional use permit, I mean, we have a whole gamma of different types of, some require public meetings. I think some of the planning zone means that have to be separate and any make recommendation to board. But the board can enter into conditional use permits, I think we did with the towers. And I think that we're well within our limits here to enter the CUP with this one with Wagner at the board level.
Yep. Well, it was, you know, what, two and a half years ago that, that this was originally brought up, so.
Right, right, the CUP was signed by the board chair April of two thousand fifteen, I think it was, it was acted on by the board before that. It was just one of the, there's several conditions of the CUP, pre-blast survey, et cetera. And I think Wagner must be ramping up to get ready to get going at that facility, and so now they're trying to get rid of some of those final conditions, and this road maintenance agreement was one of them.
Yep. Okay. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Was there?
There you go.
Oh, maybe not.
I don't recall there being a motion.
Yeah, I, I don't recall one, so.
Oh, that's right, Wayne did it on the truck.
Yeah.
That's what it was.
Yeah. Okay, need a motion to approve?
Okay.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nordby?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Skoye. Any further discussion?
I'm calling Brad right away to tell him.
Yeah. Hearing no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Motion carried. And before you leave, Joe, we were having a discussion earlier that we tabled until you got in here. Discussion, discussed revision to the proposed two thousand eighteen fee schedule.
Okay.
Do you have a copy of the fee schedule there?
I have a summary of the current, or the fees that were in place for two thousand seventeen, and then the fees or the fee dollar values that we're proposing to change for two thousand eighteen.
Okay. Wayne, did you have?
Well, well, I, I mean, I just saw that the, that the egg and the logging exemption was in there. I guess my question was what exactly, when you're writing special use permits now, what, what is the reason to have this overwet over?
Right, right, that's a fair question, I think there's two, it comes in two categories, I think. There's the oversized part of it, which could, could be width or length, which I think at, at the heart of it, it could be a public safety item. Does that, does it warrant a pilot car, does it warrant the sheriff accompanying the oversized? We did talk to the sheriff about it, and the sheriff was in support of, of helping us if it needed sort of a pilot car or something that was kind of a watered-down version of a pilot. So, being sure that we understand any oversized vehicles, in terms of physical size, that was important. Overweight, I think at the core of that, it's being sure that we, we get folks to tell us when they have overweight loads so we can decide if we think that road could take an isolated occurrence, or if we need some sort of accommodation, or do we need, we could put money in escrow, let's say, if it's damaged. We use the escrow money, if not, we don't. So it was really, I think it was those two items. What we found when we examined all of our surrounding counties, they all seem to have overweight and oversized in place. Doesn't mean we have to do it just because everybody else is doing it. It's really just to try to get a feel for, for those non-standard uses on our road. Again, a combination of public safety and understanding of damage has been done. It's, it's interesting, St. Louis County doesn't have any exemptions for forestry equipment, which is surprising, given that they must have a lot of logging activity as well. But we know that there was some concern about that maybe putting an unnecessary burden on folks, so we're, I think we're planning to talk tonight about the fact that that, those permits would exempt the logging community, in the same way it exempts the acreage filter community.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to have the exemptions in there. But in, in my unofficial research, and I haven't talked to everyone, but I've talked to people that operate in Lake of Woods, Bill Tram, and I task them, and none of them have ever heard of a permit for the county.
Wow, okay.
So I'm wondering if maybe it's really required if, like you said, just because someone else has it that we have it.
Right, and certainly don't, go ahead, sorry.
And the other thing was, a lot of guys said, well, twenty-five bucks isn't that much, but we really need another permit and another use, you know. And so that was kind of the consensus of it.
But how do you keep track of what's going on on the roads if you don't have that permit system for those oversized roads?
Well, yeah, but I guess if it's been, I mean, do we have a solution looking for a problem, is my, is my question.
Like when the roads get torn up, and then we've gotta allocate money here?
You know, the, I, I know that this is a complicated issue, on the oversized, just for a moment, over width or over length, that to me seems like a very legitimate item to know if it should've had a pilot car, if it should've been accompanied by a sheriff, if there's a public safety issue there. Is the, even the height issue, if there's overhead wires, are the roads wide enough that they're looking at using so that they can use the whole road and still a vehicle can pass, some of those kinds of things. I really put that right in the middle of a public safety issue from our perspective. Again, just overweight, just to keep track of if there was damage. We're trying to, we're trying to make it sort of an open process with, with the haulers and the truckers, so that rather than them trying to sort of sneak in a heavy. the truckers, so that rather than them trying to sort of sneak in a heavy load, just come in and talk to us about it, and let's work out an arrangement. If it's a very isolated situation, okay. If it's something ongoing, then maybe let's talk about some escrow or compensation or something. We're trying to open it up and make it easier for folks to come in and talk to us about overweight loads. But again, it's certainly up to the board. If it's not of interest to the board, then we could postpone it for a year if that's the way you want to go.
Okay, I've got a question or a statement.
Parking companies already pay an overweight overload to the government and to the state of Minnesota, but we're heavily regulated. We pay a huge amount of money already just to license and insure our trucks that are heavier. And we also have to have an additional heavy load certificate for our trucks. So, I mean, this is kind of like a redundant blackmail sort of tactic, I'm thinking. We're already regulated very enormously across the state. We already pay more than the average guy to use those same roads that everybody else uses. We have, I think you should reconsider that, because you can't just keep taxing and taxing and taxing, you know, people on top of something. Other counties don't do this to their people. They don't stop people from doing what they need to do.
Okay, could you please state your name for the record?
My name is Debbie Bowman.
Okay. We do have a meeting tonight, too, at six o'clock upstairs, you know, to have, you know, a public hearing and that on it also.
On fees, all fees?
On the fees, yep.
Including this.
Yep. Any further discussion at the board?
Well, I guess, you know, I look at the 25 dollars, I don't want more, I'm not the tax guy, as you guys know, but 25 dollars, I mean, that's the time it takes, you know, these folks to go through it and organize. I mean, if it does need, if it does need an escort, for example, things like that, I mean, we should, I don't want to put a, I don't want to put a huge burden on truckers, but on the other hand, the county's got to be aware of what's going on.
We should know what's coming in and moved on the roads.
And it's not just state roads either. Nathan, obviously you've got roads out there that you'd be concerned, I would think, if there's going to be heavy loads, you'd want to know about it to make sure that they're not damaged.
Yeah, I mean, most of our roads are behind state or Kasama Road anyways.
Well, that's true, yeah, good point.
Further discussion?
We're just, I mean, we're talking, tracking very rare that these big, so, I mean, I just think it's an exception to what's normally done, and so I think we chose, I think what Joe was presenting.
Well, we'll have some more discussion on it tonight, so.
Quick question.
Commissioner McBride?
Wayne and I had talked about this, about how you would administer this, and would it be, they'd be able to do it online?
They could do it online.
So they don't have to make a trip all the way up to the courthouse to do it?
Can be, yep, Highway Department, one page, yep.
Okay. All right, well, we'll have more discussion on it tonight.
They're going to throw the eggs at you.
I'll have my shield. All right. Anything else here? Okay, public comment? Anybody here for public comment? Crystal?
I'd like to ask, Joe, what's the process for requesting a street light on the corner of Highway 107 West as it, as it leaves County Road 1117?
You brought the, yes, I actually forgot.
That's just a death trap, trying to turn off on that, it's so dark.
Well, I think we, it could be that it's a direct request of wind, depending on if the light would be in the county right of way or the wind direction right of way. We could start with the utility company and talk about what it takes to put a pole, and then we'd have to see where the pole would be and whose right of way it would be.
Okay, is that something you would do?
Sure, we could start that, yeah.
Or would you please?
Sure. Joe, and I know Crystal's talking about, I think they turn quite a bit on our new highway there, 107, but.
Brian McBride Drive.
The only question, the only question I have, there's two residents right there, and question where they want a street light, right in their bedroom window, you know, so we need to look at both of those, but it is a very dark corner.
I want to tell everyone, Brian had an epiphany one day, he designed that road, and it worked great. So I always call him McBride Drive.
I remember that one.
Well, that was to fix a different issue.
We had a hard time getting that road though, without that idea, that was a great idea.
It's a, it's a great road.
And everybody was happy for a change.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, it's a great road, and I use it every day.
All right, anything else to come before the board?
It does get a lot of use.
Motion to adjourn by Skoye?
Eight seven six seven.
Sent by Sattler. All in favor?
No, my doctor's in a sack of time.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
So, and I go to the mall, so I can.
Okay, budget discussions.
Looks good, let's adjourn.
Nice of them, isn't it?
Yeah.
Budget process to completion. What have we got going here? I'm going to be up to this.
Now, that part, I wouldn't have that information for you, but it looks like what she wanted to start reviewing is local county TV.
Okay.
And that should be in your packet here.
Well, county TV, we all know what happens if we cut off. Right, Commissioner?
Yes, yeah, that's a good way to get in the lots of trouble.
This one right here, what are TV's at?
It's on small sheets and big sheets.
I'm trying to find it actually, so I'll get you caught up as soon as I can.
Well, I guess it says on here, the agenda.
Says what it did.
It's the same as last year?
Yeah, same as last year.
It's the same dollar amount, so.
I don't think they really even sent in a worksheet.
So it's on page three of the state package?
It's page three? There's nothing other than what we got there.
I think it's the same as it's on here, isn't it?
Yep.
So I think we could say we're done.
That sounds good.
That was good?
It's the same as last year, so.
Extension, where's, where are they?
County Extension?
Extension, they're looking at $808 increase.
Four.
It looks like on page four.
With County Extension, we have signed a three-year contract with the University of Minnesota, automatic to a half percent increase. That way, we saved ourselves by signing a three-year agreement, we saved a half a percent each forward, each year.
By making it three years versus one?
Three-year agreement, yep. So that's an automatic $808.
And that $808 will be, will be the same dollar amount then for the next three years?
Next year, we'll give you a two and one percent increase.
Okay, okay.
And looking at the staff that the extension has, and how dedicated they are, I think that's a small B for the amount of kids that they have in there and the things that you're doing.
Yep.
I believe that, John.
Well, the kids they have has declined over the years, right?
Actually, we're going to put 20, 26 percent increase.
New, new kids in the?
Yep.
Yeah, well, how many did they have in Northom?
Well, they told them right now, this year, I think, 30 or 140 kids in County Light and.
So they have been working.
And they got, they got pretty good robotics program.
Yes, they do.
Yes, they do.
They've been competitive on the state level.
Yeah, yeah, they've been, they've been very competitive, and I know what those needs. I know Joe Sullivan's been, his son was there, and I know that the whole school is full for like eight hours, and they've got four tables at least running, and they've got kids from five or six different counties coming. I know it's, I think you do a very good job with this.
It's one where, one place where we really get outreach to the county, to the kids. Rather than just this community here, we touch the other four communities.
This, this year, they, they have like three teams compete at state.
Three teams, yep. There were two in Northom, one for International Falls.
Yep.
If we go to page 18.
At the airport?
That's actually where County Extension is and County Television, and then airport follows after that. But I think there's a typo in this, in the agenda, because if you look at the, at the budget itself, it's an $880 difference, which is only, I mean, it's a small difference.
Eight hundred and eighty instead of eight oh eight, yep.
Yes.
Eight hundred and eighty?
Yep.
Yes, instead of eight oh eight.
Okay.
Good catch.
This one's easier to read, this larger.
Yep.
Of course.
Draw some of those.
Okay.
Airport. I didn't look that way.
That'll be on the next page, it's smaller.
Like, page 19.
Yeah, power, big increase in power. With a big increase in insurance because of the new terminal.
Yep.
Slight increase in janitorial.
Well, I don't know how we're going to get around those.
I know a good way to start.
What's that?
Half a percent sales.
That would, that would help, what you say for the airport.
Half a percent, well, you could do that, you know, I mean.
You're saying, let the taxpayers fix it.
Let more than the tax, it'd be more than the local people, more than the Gooch County people paying for it. You know, people from Fort Francis use our airport, so.
Can we send them the bill?
Well, you would be, every time they bought something. If that's what you designated the, the sales tax for. So profesi's, we're done with county TV, we're done with extension, and we're done with the airport.
Yeah, I, this.
Were we done with the airport?
Yeah, but not how to pay for it, but we're done with it.
Okay, well, we're done with a dollar.
So we're looking at $16,000?
A dollar, yeah.
Sixteen eight.
But just the question would be how to pay for it.
That's on page one?
At the front, what's on the front?
Drug court.
There's no change here.
July balance. The only question I have on drug court is how are they going to continue to support that when the city has dropped out of it? Statement made by the councilor was that drug court is the county's responsibility. I think drug court's everybody's responsibility.
Yeah, that was, that was good, Adam, that's a bad thing for them to do.
Is that a done deal?
I think their final lies in their budget, and they've, they've dropped, supported drug court.
How much were they quoting that?
I don't, I don't know what the city was putting in, if it was 10,000 or 25,000, I got no idea.
Well, I'm sure if you asked city council member from Big Falls or Northom about the airport, that's in International Falls.
Yep, but they do pay them. International Falls does pay.
Yeah, I know, but then, but then we're paying to drug court too, but what I'm saying is if the city of Falls is using that, too.
I agree, who uses drug court more? Where the population is.
Yep.
And not just International Falls, but the majority of the population is within this area.
And it's not all International Falls, I mean, I mean, there's the, I mean, there's area, but, but yeah, I understand your position, but.
So, okay, well, what had, so if the city's going to drop their contribution, how much of an, how much were they contributing? Cash?
We'll have to find out.
I don't know what city was. I guess we'll put ours in and put our 25,000, then I'm sure we're going to hear from.
Judge LaDuke will be down here.
Yep.
And rightly so.
Yep.
It's one of the few things that actually.
The works, we're continuing our support.
Yep. In previous years, we had a budget in anything. And for 2018, we're going to budget, actually budget the money.
We were getting outside dollars over, when the drug court got started.
Yeah, yeah, initially, that's right.
That's what happened there.
And they're, and they're adding a new probation act.
Well, we haven't made that decision yet either, but that's not.
But, and that's all the county costs, right?
What's that?
New probation officer.
Yeah, that's, I mean, it goes through ARC, but it's a cost to the county.
Well, I don't know.
The probation officer, though, won't lock me out. I'm just sitting here thinking, I mean, if we're going to do the probation officer, and I know we're going to be, the court's going to request this, the city's not providing it. Program's not going to survive on half.
We didn't, we didn't pay anything for drug court before, right? We always gave them the money, but we never budgeted for it.
Yeah, we pull out a contingency every time.
Okay. That was the issue, we always.
It's one of those typical state deal, I mean, it's what a great program, and then they fund it, and then they pull back.
Yep.
You know, leave us on our own, but it is one of the programs we're, I got to tell you, in, whether you think the world of Chad LaDuke or not, he has donated so much of his time to this service, it's unbelievable. You guys, you guys are up there.
Yeah.
I mean, Fridays, he would take his Fridays, which is a day off, and he would be doing, doing this. I mean, he has been so dedicated to it.
It's better to spend the money there than it is keeping them overnight, too.
Well, absolutely. Well, on top of that, that helps keep these transports down and everything else. I mean, gosh, it's just, it's a program that pays us back, that's what I'm saying. There's a net gain here to the county for the transports, or the county extension.
Doesn't the state continue to pay in some of the larger metropolitan areas for paying for drug court, but they've dropped it in the rural areas?
I don't know, that's a good question.
Seems to me I remember something like that.
Well, as I say, it's one, it's a program that works, I just, it just pains me to see that cut me out.
It costs money to incarcerate people, if you can turn them around, I mean, even.
If you have one, one success, I mean, it's.
Twenty-five thousand doesn't go very far.
No. I just think we keep it in, in the budget, and we'll see where it goes from there. I mean, if the, if the judge comes in July and says.
I'm out of money.
We'll have to make that decision from there.
Come on, Joe. You're in the right place. We're about.
I thought I was early.
You are, you're about 10 minutes early.
You got tickets for Twins game, or?
Yeah.
Oh, I'll call the air.
The only problem is now we have to quit talking about you.
That rarely stops people, I don't want you guys.
But I guess on this side, I don't know, we should maybe look at it, but I mean, realistically, we may.
I guess we don't have to finalize it anyhow, but I mean, that's something we're going to have to find out what their contribution has been and what, what it's going to cost us.
You know, it's not only Judge LaDuke, the staff too, I mean, they all, they put so much into this, and it's been successful, so I don't know what we're going to do, but I'm sure.
We keep this at this level, right?
Right now, and then we'll, we'll.
Can we ask, can we ask someone from the city and see what their reasoning is, or that you're, I don't know, don't do us any good, but.
The one statement was because the county's dropped out of ambulance service, so.
Yeah.
Did that.
Gee, I believe that one.
That's why I was telling you, sometimes it's not worth the.
Yeah, I know, that's right. But it's an important issue.
Yep.
I guess our concern is that if somebody has to fund it, maybe we, I mean, we need 50,000, we hate to, we hate to think about it, but somebody's got to pay more.
Yeah, it'd be great, though, we cross that bridge when we come to it, huh?
Yeah.
We haven't heard anything from the court yet, I'm, I'm interested to see what, what they would say. I'm sure they're aware of it.
Yeah, I think at fairness, we certainly have to make sure that Judge LaDuke's aware of it, that we continue our funding, that the city has dropped out, and then he can respond. We continue our funding, but the city has dropped out, and then he can respond, like Brian said, he can, he'll, if it's an issue, he'll be down or something.
Yep.
Okay, that, hope that library guy's not here, and now he's been here, we're gonna convoy twenty five.
Oh, we said, we said await it.
Yeah, we should've waited, yeah.
So, are we okay to go ahead, or should we wait till eleven o'clock?
I think we go.
I think we can go.
Yeah.
We do the whole.
Yep.
Yeah.
Kevin, Kevin will get, give him lane.
I said, welcome.
Yep.
Thanks for coming.
Glad to do it.
Well, good morning.
I, I think Jim has appeared before this.
Oh, he's been.
Didn't worry before?
He's been here many times.
Twenty five years.
Twenty five years, huh? Would you like us to reintroduce ourselves, so?
No, I think I know this, Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Norman, Commissioner Day, Commissioner Havelke, and Commissioner Brey.
He does his homework, getting home.
I can do this as long as you have.
Yeah, I know.
Can we, can we change the subject here, 'cause?
I haven't met.
I met you, I, I, I met you, I think, when I was in Duluth, I used to run the hotel in Duluth, the Holiday Inn.
Really, yes.
And I think that's where I met you.
Well, I didn't do anything.
You left your room, huh?
Wasn't partying.
Probably.
I'm, I'm always the guy with the credit card, so, for our group, since I have to.
Didn't notice any extra charges for room repairs or anything like that?
I could tell you the story about a board member and adult movie, but I won't go into that. I don't know, are you being recorded?
Yes, we are.
That was a long time ago. Winona County refuses to let their commissioners, county commissioners go out of town and charge hotel rooms. Because of that issue.
Was that, was that who does?
Winona County.
Winona County.
Yeah, if they go out of town, they pay for their own rooms.
Jim, we, at this time of the year, we all get around and talk to other commissioners, and even other mayors once in a while, and this has nothing to do with the library. But, one of the first subjects that comes up is two thousand and eighteen levy. So, at your expense, I'd like you to entertain us and tell us about the lobbies. What's the lobbies per?
Sure, and that'll be on camera. Our preliminary levy is forty three point seven percent increase. Uh, we lost, uh, almost all our mining effects money from, sure, from Mars and our metal, and, uh, so, and we even cut the operating budget. If you, you can't lose over three hundred thousand dollars, and, and, well, you can, you can slash and burn, but then you don't have any money. So, it's pretty ugly.
Any chance of the mining coming back?
Uh, it will, I think maybe, but it's, the, the way they allocate the distribution is always a couple of years later, and so, the, the cycle takes a long time to correct itself. I, I hope it does. But, uh, yeah, we've got some, some hard decisions to make, yeah, on two thousand and eighteen.
Oh. So, we're a few minutes early, so I just had to.
No, it's, it's.
I had to get that out of you.
It's, it's, it's a tough spot to be in, we've, you know, we've, we've left. We've been pleased with a fairly minimal increases for several years, we've been very proud of that, and, and our turn came.
Yeah.
Have you mentioned this before?
Uh, not this kind of increase. It's my eleventh year as mayor, and then I was four years on the council, so for fifteen years, we've been pretty conservative, and this, this is really out of the box for us. But for the public, I mean, they obviously understand. Yeah. Because they know cutting funding is, is no fault of the council. We, we certainly haven't been spending excessively or anything like that, uh, so they'll, they'll have to make some decisions about, uh, public works, which is plowing, law enforcement. We have really good coverage, we have. Do you have those, usually you have a contract with St. Louis County? We have a contract with the city of Gilbert. With Gilbert? So, we have a shared, shared police services, and it's really good, but the community's gonna have to decide, do they want to still have it? And, and maybe they will. I, I wouldn't be surprised if this community says, no, uh, these are the services we want, or we can, I'm sure you guys get the same thing, plowing is never fast enough. And so, if we cut personality, it won't be faster.
Yeah. So, Jim, you're a thousand, thousand people?
Yep, we're, we, uh, we talked to the demographer, we're just a hair over a thousand. We're under for a while, but, but, all right, our population actually went up a little over the last two years.
Oh.
So, what, what do you, 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 you attend school? Um, it's southeast, southeast Aurora, White Lake, the lobby. So, you've incorporated with them, but does Gilbert go there with them?
Yeah.
I live in Gilbert, yeah, okay, so they, that's right, I live in Gilbert, so you are now part of the southeast group? Although we like a lot of, a lot of places, we have, uh, buses from three, four districts that stop in our community.
Sure.
Open enrollment. So, have you been in Boeck or Boeak? Uh, no, I'm actually from southern Minnesota, I've been in Boeak for twenty five years.
You know, when I started, former commissioners, McAdo, Jordane, and his uncle, and Don Samback, they, they were telling me that how being a rural commissioner's changed, because back when they started, homeowners were happy to get plowed out the next day when there was a snowstorm, I mean, they thought that was fabulous.
Yeah.
Now, they expect to be plowed out before they go to work in the morning. I mean, the, the expectations have changed because the county's, you know, the local government has been providing all these good services, and, and it's an expectation issue now. So, yeah, when you, when you have a calamity like you're talking about, it'll be interesting to see how people do react, because, you know, at the end of the day, probably gonna have to make cuts, there's no question.
And that's, in my position, we'll let the community speak.
Yep, yep.
What have you done here before, Jim, have you talked, given, you've apparently been here before, so you've given an overview of ALS and all, and what?
Yeah, I tend to try to give a quick update as what's going on, and.
You survived this all these years, you've been nice to them.
Actually, I have, uh, I, I could name some counties where that isn't always, well, wasn't always the case, although it's gotten better. I think the role of the job of the commissioners changed, I think, over the last couple of decades.
Oh, it certainly has. Well, that's the other thing, yeah, there's old commissioners, I, the meetings lasted an hour. It was like, and you know, it was all about roads and bridges, public health only had one, two employees, and social services had five, I mean, you're a guy.
On your.
Different world.
On your big thing here, it'll be on page four.
Page four.
Kind of in the middle.
Ron's being very open, not to try to hide him.
So.
Is it okay if I pass some paper around?
Sure can.
Is it probably better, or?
We like pictures.
Sure.
We like pictures.
That's right. I may have seen it, I know Ron's seen it.
There you go.
One more piece, maybe.
All right, I didn't want to interrupt your, your.
I was hoping you were gonna bring this, so. Uncle, I have your.
Okay, uh, we, we do this every year with all seven counties, where we try real hard to cost out the services that are being provided, and one of the things that we insist on is particularly with, uh, with the bookmobile, is we don't, we, we average it out, we, we, uh, for instance, the, the bookmobile goes to Gamel and, and is, uh, we don't, uh, cost those, uh, when, when we calculate the cost of providing that service, we're, we're, we're not trying to make it sound like it is more expensive to serve those areas, technically it is, but the argument could be maybe, maybe if your bookmobile was based closer, uh, uh, back in the eighties, we actually had a bookmobile that operated out of the Falls. And so, when we, when we cost services, we, we, we try to make that equitable, so, each year, what we do is we, we, we calculate based on the activity that's happening in the various departments and the, and the actual cost. Uh, delivery, we just divide it up by the number of stops, so, again, we don't charge more, or we don't assess more of a cost for a charge delivered to Falls than we would to Mount Iron. I, I just think that's more equitable to do it.
So, the numbers, they're as close to being real as possible?
Yeah, uh, the only hesitation is some of the calculations are based on circulation, which is the activity, items checked in and out, and, uh, we're about three fourths of the way through the year, so we don't have the two thousand and seventeen statistics, and so we always get a little nervous when we, when we're, when we're doing, uh, averaging and things like that, when our, uh, Ron knows the assistant director at, at ALS, Sherry is actually, in addition to being a librarian, she's a CPA. She gets real nervous when the numbers aren't absolutely precise, and that we don't use, uh, the, the total two thousand and seventeen circulation, which we won't have until January, so she always likes me to make those disclaimers, so. So, our, our, our calculations are that the services that are being provided today, uh, in, in Kooch, run us about, uh, not quite eighty five thousand dollars, and then, and as you know, as well as I do, the, the amount that goes to their library system is forty four. Just to be perfectly honest, most of our counties do run in a deficit, so, uh, the percentage of deficit in Kooch is far more significant than it is in most of the other counties. And that, and that seems, seems a shift from here to here, too, depending on what the activity is. The conversations we've had with Ron, well, I'll back up. The, in the past, we had two counties, uh, Lake, Lake County was also running in a fairly severe deficit, and at the time, one of our board members is a former commissioner, Lenore Johnson.
Yep.
I don't know if you have, have dealt with Lenore.
She's still recovering, then?
Uh, she's actually still back, she's back in our board.
Oh.
But she went to.
From being a commissioner.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think you ever get over that, I think her demeanor on the board depends immediately on what I would expect of a commissioner.
Yeah, she, she was good to work with.
She, she went to work on the Lake County Board, and as a result, when they, they, they made some increases, we were able to then absorb into our budget the cost of the, the automation system, which I'm, I'm sure you've, you've heard about, uh, to their, to the, to the two libraries, Silver Bay and Two Harbors in, in Lake County. So, right now, the only public library in our system that is being built for the automation services, because we don't have enough offsetting income, is International Falls Library, and, and they're paying around nine thousand dollars a year. And so, the conversation we've had with Ron, uh, Commissioner Norman, I'm sorry, that's not very respectful, I'm a commissioner, uh, is to work towards that goal. We, we haven't gone to any of our counties since this gap has to be made up, and has to be made up now. That's, that's a more of a systemic problem overall, that we, isn't gonna be adjusted with a, a couple visits, and, and, uh, it's gonna take some time, and actually, Lake of the Woods, your neighbors to the west are, uh, the opposite. There's actually a surplus, because primarily, these people have the bookmobile to go out there and take the scan and forth, so we're trying to figure out how to provide more services over there. And so, our goal in our, in our conversation with the Commissioner Norman is, is to try to work towards narrowing that, that nine thousand dollar gap, so that we can, uh, eliminate. And a nine thousand dollar increase would, would mean that we would, we would turn around and we would no longer build the Falls Library for, for automation. Uh, out of our twenty six libraries that we built, there are no ones, of the, of the twenty six libraries, so they won't be actually built, so, I, I suspect they, they would appreciate that, so.
And one, another side effect is there's a new digital service at the library where patrons can come in, upload a book onto their device, and right now, it's only available to city residents, not to county residents because of SB issue. And I have been, I've had, have had people talk to me about, uh, server.
We, we just had a, as an aside, Jill Dalton, we just had an interesting situation where the city of Duluth does that with one of their services, and so, uh, to be perfectly honest, we have a number of libraries who, who license products and make them only available within their cities.
We've got the verbal agreement, quote, to give International Falls paying two thousand dollars every year. And, uh, I mean, that just kind of flies in the face of that. By the way, I, because of that verbal agreement, are we tied to that twenty two thousand dollars? I, I know from the, from the state side, we are, anything we contribute, we can, we can, we can, we can make it more, but we can never make it less.
Correct, uh, the, the total is what the state mandates, uh, and, and as you know, it's been frozen since two thousand and eleven. And actually, going, I, I went back until the early nineties, and the number hasn't dramatically changed.
Hasn't?
Much, but in terms of the agreement, I did some homework when, when Commissioner Norman started asking some, you know, trying to learn how, how, how the funding worked. Whatever the agreement was, and whatever it was, whether it was a document or a verbal.
I've never seen a document.
I can't find, and it was in place when I got there in ninety two. The only thing I was told was my predecessor made some sort of reference, and unfortunately, he's in his nineties now, nursing, so, nursing, so I can't really mine his memory, which I would dearly love to do. Uh, the only mention was something involving South International Falls, which makes a lot more, probably more sense to, to you gentlemen than it does to me, I, I don't know the history. That looks like that was an annexation, maybe in the late eighty, uh, and so, somehow, it sounds like maybe that triggered the sharing, but I don't, it's not that I, I'm not speaking against it by any means, I, I think it's worked just fine, but I don't know, I don't know where it came from.
I'm just, well, I'm just speaking to the fact that this uploading, for example, is a good example. They, you know, we do contribute, but they're gonna bar county residents.
Yeah, well, we can, we can fix that.
I don't know why they can't do a fee, you know, to the person who wants to upload or something, and cover costs, or, they've gotta get creative, too, to.
Well, fees are tricky in Minnesota, because statute says that we're not, uh, public collaborators are not allowed to charge for services, not allowed to charge.
Okay.
Minnesota residents for, for services, I, I do get that a lot, uh, and I've been asked, well, actually, it was at the Carlton County Board, they asked, well, maybe those, instead of fees, they could be donations. And actually, we're, we are, we are gonna look into that, uh, electronic, it was, uh, as Commissioner Norman says, a number of our services are getting to be electronic, so they're twenty four seven, and it doesn't matter where you live. You don't have to be next door to a library, but, uh, we're hoping to put up, create some sort of methodology where people can actually make donations and things like that, uh, because services aren't getting cheaper, you know that as well as I do.
And of course, you know Marie Knutson well, with the.
I, I met her a few times, uh, I was more from the Wave of Man of the Era.
Okay. Well, no one, no one was more dedicated than Mary Knutson.
When, when does, when does a, a public library become not public anymore? When can you start excluding people from the service? As I, I, I don't understand. The, the statute actually talks about basic, I think, basic services, so, there, if, if I, if I had heard that the, any of our libraries was not checking items out to people who walked in with a valid library card, I, I would be concerned. Duluth licenses a database or a product where you can download music, and it's only available to Duluth residents. Unfortunately, they had a glitch with their computer system, so for the first year, the service was available to everybody, and just within the last couple of months, they've actually, they, they discovered the glitch and cut off people, and of course, that's when I started to get the calls, is why, why can't I have the service anymore, while it's made for by the citizens of, of the city of Duluth, and, uh, they've decided to not make that, that, I guess, premium service available to people who live outside the cities. It's not something we generally encourage, it's, I, I, I agree, it's, uh, we, we should try to, to make all our services available to everybody. We, we even wrestle with people who don't live in Minnesota, but they own property, uh, we're trying to decide what does that mean, if they're paying property taxes, maybe they should have access to library services, so we're trying to figure some of that stuff out, too.
They all still live on the border.
Yeah, uh, I know there's a reciprocity agreement that the Falls Library has, uh, with your neighbors, with Fort Francis. I, well, I discovered, I actually, it wasn't the Falls, it was another border town, I discovered that people were accessing some of the, our downloadable services that paid with state dollars, and I really don't wanna have an argument with the state of Minnesota that we're providing free services to Canadian residents, and so, uh, and, now, now you can, Canadian, uh, Canadian citizens who aren't real happy because they got cut off. Sorry, but, but, there are some limits in international borders around here.
So, Duncan, about, I don't know if we've been through the numbers here every year, but I don't know else to do this, so, if you look at the two thousand and seventeen budget, you'll see on page four, you'll see essentially sixty seven thousand.
Yep.
Sixty seven thousand dollars was our total library budget. Out of that money, with the two thirds, one third agreement, ALS got forty four thousand, six hundred and forty four dollars, and the Falls Library got the other twenty two thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars, but because ALS is providing essentially forty thousand dollars. But because ALS is providing essentially $40,000 more service to the county than what we're paying for, the Falls Library has been paying a $9,000 fee to ALS, or something like that.
Yeah. We can't absorb it.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. So if you look over, I asked Jenny to redo the format here on the budget. So if you look over at 2018 budget request, the Falls Library is actually broken out as a separate line item, and it hasn't before, it wasn't. And the $53,644 is the two-thirds amount plus the $9,000. So what we've agreed on here is for a $9,000 increase, the Falls Library gets to keep their total $22,000. And ALS gets a $9,000 increase, and they will stop charging the automation fee, and people from throughout the county will be able to access the digital program.
Everyone in the county?
Everybody in the county.
And the part about extending access, we're not in the, Arrowhead's not in the middle of that.
No, that's right.
I think that's a conversation that apparently the counties have with the city.
Yeah. I didn't really mean to-
No, that's fine.
Well, that's kind of where we're at. Considering the fact that we're in deficit of about $40,000, I think the $9,000 is a good start to fix that problem. And so ALS gets $9,000 benefit, the local library essentially gets a $9,000 benefit.
Is revenue neutral for us? Because instead of getting the $9,000 from the library, we'll get it from the county. But we think that's a fair solution in terms of just keeping everybody whole.
Yeah. I do, too. I think it's a reasonable-
I don't know how the county views that as a fair solution, but again, for us, it's revenue neutral.
Well, if you wanted to cut services back by $40,000, then everybody would be happy, but that's not reasonable.
You actually made this understandable now. Before, I was having a hard time comprehending when that was working. Anyway, I don't know the history of the one-third, two-third. I really did try. I went, actually, went through board minutes for, heaven help me, for 20, back until the mid-eighties, and I can't lie to anyone.
Salt Falls didn't anything, why Salt Falls would have to, necessarily, Salt Falls residents were using the public library, and there was some kind of agreement there, it probably had to be.
Again, some of you are going to have a much better idea. I wish I knew the history, but finding the people who were involved, and if they did put it on paper, I sure can't find it. And I think they were looking at City Hall, and I don't know what's in your archives, but good luck.
So our goal here, of course, this time of the year, is to, of course, cut the budget. And, you know, you're familiar with that.
Oh, yeah. We're working on it.
This is a case where we're actually receiving a service, but haven't been paying for it. So to me, there's something wrong here, and we need to fix it at least a little bit. So that's kind of where we're at today.
And the regional, the 12 regional systems are working very hard on, we made some progress. Almost got some good news at the state this year in terms of asking for state funding, because I think part of this is the state isn't really keeping up their end of the bargain in terms of our operate, a lot of our operations are funded with state dollars. And the state really hasn't, the last increase was in 2007.
So Jim, all the other libraries have absorbed this $9,000?
We used county funds from the other counties to offset, but we, Lake County was the last, the two libraries in Lake County were the last two, besides the Falls, that was still being charged for that service.
I think Lake County may have ramped up their entries every year to reach-
Yeah, they did it over a couple of years. It was, I think it was over $20,000, and so that took a couple of years. And, you know, we're open to whatever works best for you folks. But as Commissioner Norby says, we're not here asking for $40,000.
That's good.
Well, I know what's going on in my community, and I know the struggle, so I just don't think that's a reasonable request. I think the state has to step, before we go to counties and ask for significant increases like that, the state has to step up and do their part, and they just haven't. And I know you find that in a lot of other services.
But at least, Jeremy, if we did that, you'd be, so to speak, 25% of the way there.
Yeah.
And the local library wouldn't see a $9,000 increase interfunded.
What I hope doesn't happen is then that their budget is cut. I don't think that would happen. I think the city is pretty, is sort of pretty supportive of the library.
Well, that's kind of where we're at, I guess. That pretty well covered, Jim.
Yeah, unless there's questions, and I just have, I know you have brochure things at the county, and you guys are probably some of the best advocates. So I've got our 17 bookmobile schedule, we're, all 17 is almost over, and our amenable brochure, and then our downloadable content, which is books and audiobooks, that's all I can be.
No, that's good, that's good, thank you.
And I did, I did take advantage, I took a few minutes before I left the building this morning. This is our bookmobile schedule, but I highlighted the stops that are in Cooch. And the one that always stumped me, and oh, it has an awful color, I apologize for that dark green. Yeah, Roush. I think, I haven't put a GPS on the truck, I suppose the staff have cell phones. Which side of the, where, if the stop actually includes a thing, it's got to be pretty darn close. And then our stop at Cabotogona, I'm not really sure if the Township Hall, that might be St. Louis.
That is St. Louis.
Okay. That's why I put that one in green. I wasn't 100% sure.
They've got to ramp it all up.
GRS, Greenie, Roush, Silverdale.
So is that stopped within Cooch County?
Yes. Absolutely. You haven't lived till you've been to Silverdale.
We had, I had the same issue with the, when I met with the Atasca County Administrator with Bear River, because that's right on the Atasca-St. Louis border, and I suspect the truck probably could park right across.
First meeting I had in Silverdale back in '92, when I was first elected.
Twenty-one.
Went down there to, they had a big, they had plowed the county park shut down there. We have a beautiful park on the Little Fork River. And one of the neighbors down there, they used a locker, took his bulldozer, plowed it up six-foot worms so nobody could get in there. So they were going to prosecute him, so let me take care of this. So I had him notify out of the quick paper, the county commissioner's coming down for a meeting, the new commissioner. Well, I got down there, and it was, it was like a big event. These cars all start pulling in, but they get out and they're, you know, I had a Vietnam veteran, he was smoking pot, and three of the old timers are carrying rifles. I mean, this is how, this is how they come to meet the commissioner. Luckily, I had my wife Carol with me. And to boil it down, I said, you know, you cannot take the law in your own hands, you have to call the sheriff, because you're going to be prosecuted, the guy who done it, et cetera. And he said, it's no use to call the sheriff's office, because it takes them two hours to get here. And on top of that, half the time, they don't come at all. And so I'm looking at this crew, and they're drinking brandy, and this, you know, they're driving around, open bottles, everything. I said, I'll tell you what, I'm going to petition the board tomorrow, we meet tomorrow, and petition them to hire a deputy station right here with me. They all look at each other, hell no, don't do that! And I said, well, blow this, and you know, they turned out to be, they're just my favorite constituents. I had more fun down there with them, but they're just heart of the earth type people. But it's so remote, and something like this is very valuable.
I think it was one of the last stops, we, our bookmobile now checks things in and out with iPads, and they have to use a cellular signal. And I think those, that area, and Effie was another one, was one of the last places where we could actually get a signal.
Because the signal's so marginal.
It's better now. I mean, I don't know what's been going on out there, but we have 64 stops, something like that, and they all have decent cell signals. I guess that's-
I like the one I tested coming at the Hutter.
Yeah.
Mr. Scoey knows that place.
Yep. I'm going by it.
I hear about the gosh damn place all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
River Tapper, I've been there, too.
Well, with all these services, I mean, those people would be-
Yeah. And that's, it's really, it's really fun. I, you know, we talk about numbers and things like that, but when people get to some of these remote places, it's the only time they see each other for a couple of weeks. It's really a social occasion. And so we're really, be part of that, because I hear that from the staff all the time, oh yeah, we have these people who visit these people, this is the only time they see each other.
Well, I'm living proof. They'll be down there feuding with each other, but when the government comes, they're all friends and they're against the government. I love it. I mean, it's just, great people.
So how many bookmobiles have we got on the road, Jim?
We've got one.
Just one?
Back in the seventies, we had five.
That poor guy was putting a million miles a year.
Yeah, I'm, right on my desk is the, I have to make one change, and the specs are going to go out, and we're in the process of, oh, we're going to put out a RFP for a new vehicle. And fortunately, I don't have to come back to our counties and ask for capital, because we've been stocking away our e-cards for 10 years on this one. So we think we've got enough money in reserves to make a new truck. Bookmobiles have dropped off in Minnesota, but it's still vital up here.
Do you have an idea how many miles you have on the bookmobile you have now?
They told me, I believe it's over 300,000. We took delivery in January of 2007, so it's, you know, it's-
Okay. Is that a decent?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'd have to be decent.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
The crew insisted, the drivers insisted that the truck that we are driving now had have a Cat engine. We've never had a Cat engine before. And it's been pretty solid.
So International has Cat engines?
Yeah, the next, we, the next truck, the current truck is a Ford F-650. The next truck will be an International. I defer to the drivers, because, you know, they're the ones who are out there. And they said they really want a National truck, so we'll purchase that separately, and then we'll have it upped and upgraded probably in some work.
Well, very good. So I guess we'll consider the request.
Sure. And if there's any data that you need, Jenny's got my email. Any information you need, we're happy to provide it.
I don't know if we really, Jenny isn't here because she has a family issue, that's the only reason.
That's okay.
Well, we don't make the final decision, so we have none of that.
Okay.
We're with you, Rick.
Well, I, it's always a victory when I don't get, I don't leave with my tail between my legs.
Oh, we never do that.
No. Actually, the further away I get from Mount Nyiragongo, the more civil the commissioners get.
Well, we can, I believe that.
Well, you presented this from St. Louis County Board that time.
I haven't for a while.
You gotta go, it'd be fun.
That's a lot more formal, though.
It gets to be a big deal.
For seven, I don't, right?
Yeah.
City councils like that over there, they have the podium, and you have to get up, and it's like being in front of the court jesters. I'm like, we've always tried to keep it informal so people are comfortable, so you know.
Well, the story that I tell is when I started in '92, I made the round, making budget requests, and that's when the minimum level had doubled, so everybody was hot and bothered. And every meeting I went to, I put on my necktie. And I got back, and after seven county boards, I said, you know, I went to seven county boards, and except for one of them, I was the only person in the room wearing a necktie. I'm not doing that anymore, and my wife said, God, show us back. You're going to a county board, you need to wear a necktie.
We appreciate it.
I will be off when I get to the car.
Prior to me starting, all the commissioners wore ties. Actually, there were two ladies, too, but they always dressed up and stuff. And I don't know, the board, we had, it was the first time we had a whole new board in Minnesota, the mayor board turned over, and they all wanted to be more informal, except Chuck. Chuck always wore a tie.
Last meeting before Christmas is the one time Mr. Bablick puts on a tie.
Not for long.
Not for long. Starts out with a-
Probably the first discussion that you and I had, and Sherry, was, I asked, we were always concerned that if we increased funding to the library, and a county falls on hard times, we wouldn't be able to roll that back. But we can now roll it back to a state minimum.
The minimum that, the 66, that's frozen. That's never changed. I was at the League of Minnesota Cities yesterday, and I had a conversation with them. And that, but the topic came up, well, is the library community ever going to make a go at the statutory change and try and get that unproven? So, well, I just need to retire first, somebody else can, somebody else can wait.
Deal with that.
So, yeah, you could double it next year, and then in '19, you could go right back to the 66. That's been the biggest confusion I've had to deal with, and the city councils do, that they think that the old law is still in place and it's not.
But I thought the county attorney said if it's in effect for three years, then it is frozen.
Not from the library's standpoint, no.
So that law's no longer in effect?
That's good to know.
There was a time when it was, and that was a very contentious issue, particularly with county boards. That is no longer.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, the sad thing is it hurt libraries, because that's why county boards were not willing to do anything.
And that's one of the reasons we, librarians and other supporters went and tried to get the law changed, and then, of course, that's when the recession appeared. So they, and instead of going, making it like every four or five years, it became frozen in perpetuity, so it froze since 2011. And I don't see that changing anything soon. So, yeah, Commissioner Norby's right, that there's nothing preventing a rollback.
Yeah, I figured this conversation would never get started if that was still in place. That was the first thing I wanted to ask you.
Yeah, but it was, Commissioner Bablick's right, that was a non-starter in a lot of places, because what happens if we get stuck with that higher number?
You're stuck.
Put the tax, you know, something like, anytime you're, you've got to force the payment like that, it puts the taxpayers in an awful spot, because you just experienced it. Look what happens when you have a scenario that no one can perceive, and you have to make cuts.
I hear you.
Well, thank you much for making the trip up here.
Oh, my pleasure.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Good seeing you.
It was beautiful. Your job's not easy as mayor in that situation.
Ah, yeah, well, and we've got a, pound of a thousand, we've got a, this year's phase is $5 million infrastructure project. And I can tell you, the last six to eight weeks of solid rain have been a holy nightmare. Nothing's getting done. Although they're going, they're going like gangbusters the last week or so, they're going nuts.
You get to get ready, we've been dry.
Well, it's been, and it's all clay, and so it's just been, it's just been awesome. When you talk about people complaining, that's what they're complaining about, is their streets are torn up and nothing's hap, nothing was happening.
So winter is big if we're walking.
Oh, yeah, with the ski. Well, I'm not quite ready for it yet, I'm not conceding that, or I'm really, I'm ready for a snowstorm just yet. Let's get the streets done.
I'm with you. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. I appreciate the time, as always.
Yep, thanks much.
Let me know if you need anything.